As is our tradition, anything from last week that we need to discuss, procedural stuff, things with upcoming heartburn people had after the meeting. Okay, good enough.
Do you mind if I cover one real quickly?
Please do.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. If you wouldn't mind referring real quickly to a memo that looks somewhat like this. We have put together some costs and again, kind of a list of amenities that you could consider for the South Poplar YDOT project, not South Poplar, excuse me, Poplar project with YDOT. And we tried to follow up based on the information and feedback that you gave us last time. You'll see it on here, on your agenda as well, under item number six. We got it in kind of late and so I wanted to give you the flexibility as much as you would want with regard to talking more about it tonight or taking this information and addressing it again later. Ultimately, what we'll need to do is amend our agreement with YDOT to include whatever it is you would like to include pursuant to the amenities that we discussed in this memo to, you know, from a formal standpoint, to put all this into motion. So one of the things that you'll notice on here that is different but yet consistent with what it is that you talked about the last time was the third paragraph under the summary section that discusses the east side connection to the bike trail. You'll notice that that can happen, but it will happen at a cost of about $75,000 to make it happen. We do think that YDOT's going to have the land adequate to do it, but it will take, given its grade and everything, some costs that would otherwise not be as expensive. So, you know, maybe I'm the only one that had a little sticker shock with that, but nonetheless, that is what it will take to make that connection happen. Otherwise, on the west side, YDOT will make that connection happen all on their dime. And so it again is kind of a splitting of costs, if you will, to make sure those connections are all in place.
Well, that was quite often my question. You still have 10 feet on the west side, but this will be to get the 10 foot versus five foot on the east side.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, we're actually talking about two things there. The five feet of sidewalk that you might be referring to on either the east or west sides, I can't remember which side YDOT's willing to cover, will actually cost us about $426,000.
That's the last item, right?
That's the first entry to your memo, yeah. The connection of the bike path along the eastern portion of the bridge structure to get, so that they don't have to cross Poplar to get to the west connection, will be the $75,000 cost.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in comparison, it's a heck of a deal, 75 compared to 420, you know. But that obviously takes away from what we could use that funding otherwise for, and you can see in the last paragraph on the front of your memo there, a reminder of what some of those other potentials were for amenities along the project area. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm open to whatever council would like to do, including bringing this up again in another work session or quickly.
Or about $37,000, over.
Well, if we go with the widening of the sidewalk, the bike trail connection on the east side, the lighting on the bridge deck, we are about, yeah, about 46, 50,000 over at this point in time. If we decide to add in portions of, say, trees or lighting, that of course goes up, lighting being the most expensive, to the tune of about $400,000 bucks, up and down both sides of Poplar.
I think we read last time we would just put the infrastructure in, right? Is that what people remember? We wouldn't actually put the lighting. Comments, questions, Ken?
I thought we'd do the lighting on the bridge.
Yes.
Okay, but then the rest.
Yeah, correct. Because we had to put somewhere.
So to have the 10-foot sidewalk on both sides of the bridge would be the 426,000.
Yes, sir.
Was there any discussion with them at all about moving the 10-foot sidewalk to the east side instead of the west side?
Mr. Mayor, I may need to defer to Andrew on that, if that's okay.
So we have 10 feet on both sides.
Your honor, council, yeah, I thought the direction was you wanted 10 feet on both sides of the bridge deck. So I didn't even approach him about reversing it to 10 feet on the downstream side versus the upstream side.
I thought that was the main priority.
Well, I thought that, yeah, our preference was both sides. You know, my fallback would have been 10 feet on the east side would be more beneficial than 10 feet on the west side, but maybe I was the only one that thought that.
Well, I think, I think we had five thumbs up for 10 feet on both sides.
No, yeah, 10 feet on both sides way better.
So we don't really need to worry about that. Any other comments, questions, concerns about, because this is a little bit of a bump up from what we lifted at last time. Okay. Do we need to discuss that gap, Carter, at all tonight, or?
We don't need to discuss it tonight. We can certainly bring it back in a, in a, in a setting after you've had the opportunity to kind of read through this information and, or we can get your thumbs one way or the other. There's a variety of options available to you.
One, in theory, we'll have to have it brought back because, I mean, ultimately, if we wanted to look, because this was, for like, if we were putting in the full trees and the lighting all the way down, correct, this wouldn't be for the infrastructure, the 400 and the 150.
Right, correct.
And so, I mean, if we were going to actually discuss like where we're funding it from, maybe we could have numbers at that time for continuing that infrastructure but not having the actual, like you said, vertical elements in place just yet, but having the lighting and tree irrigation system, infrastructure built while the sidewalks are torn up.
So, Steve?
And I am assuming along the lines of Councilwoman Kristen, that the reason you came up with the 626 to 50 is none of the 150 or 400 was included in the price, is that correct?
Correct.
Otherwise, if you include 150, you're at 766.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to need more. If we want to put in the infrastructure, we're still going to need more than just $100,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I could address that a little bit. Andrew and I talked in a little more detail in the interim period since the last time we discussed this, councilmen and councilwomen. And the reality is, if indeed council would like to wait with regard to establishing the trees and/or the lights, Andrew believes, and certainly it's his team's opinion, that getting in the most critical portions of the network that would be necessary on either front would really be that portion that's under the highway that otherwise would require boring and so forth. And so we believe that that should be done regardless because that cost would be so minimal, given that the whole street area will be open anyway. So we're going to go ahead and put that in, given its real minimal impact. The lighting and the trees will be outside of the sidewalks for the most part, and so we will have fresh ground to deal with regardless of what point, either before or after the project, we decide to do this, if at all. So we believe that the cost will be absolutely minimal and the disruption to the work that has been completed will be nonexistent. And so I guess I would retract my recommendation, if you will, that, that putting in the irrigation and the electric utility along the eastern and western portions of the project would be necessary at this time.
So you would, excuse me, so all you would be looking at doing would be putting conduit, pipe, whatever you want to call it, running east-west under the road, kept on each end, so then you could come back later on and tie into those to?
And we will just do that as a matter of scope.
I was going to say, yeah, that's, if that's all we're talking about, that is a minimal cost.
Very minimal.
Okay. So it costs much, a lot much more later to do that.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Make sure you get a good survey point on where they are.
Are we all good then to move on? Okay. We have a guest with us, Sabrina Lane, who's going to tell us about the Wyoming 2-1-1 system, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It's a little bit of a drive, but it wasn't a bad day to be on the road, I hope.
It was great. It was easy to drive up here and I've made a few days out of it, so I'm very, very honored to be here to present with the council members of Casper and those of you in the audience. I'm Sabrina Lane. I am the executive director of Wyoming 2-1-1, and we're going to talk a little bit about who we are. Basically, Wyoming 2-1-1 is a one-stop shop of information and referral for individuals who are in need of help in human services. So we opened our doors in 2011, and we started first in about seven counties in the southeast corner of Wyoming, expanded 12 counties, and now we are statewide. And so we have been serving strongly in all of the counties across the state. We are a centralized access point for those who need those services, so folks can give us a call and then we can refer those out to those appropriate services that they are in need of. 2-1-1 is an easy-to-remember free help line for those who are looking for those help in human services. We also provide information to communities such as yours about those situations that are taking place. So what are those presenting needs in Casper and Nitrona County and whatnot? And we can relay that, the demographics back to you, and I'll get a little bit more into that here in my presentation. And we also partner in the disaster recovery process for information dissemination. We have a very small staff, myself, an information and referral specialist, as well as our database curator. We are located in Cheyenne, and we house with United Way of Laramie County. We're open Monday through Friday, 8 to 6, and we provide services across the state of Wyoming. For those of you that don't know, 2-1-1 actually is a nationwide network of services. So every state across the United States has a 2-1-1 call center. They're also in Canada and Puerto Rico. And in Wyoming, I find that we are very fortunate because our service is accessible by 100% of the population. Some states are only accessible to about 94%, but overall, we, we can reach 100%. And how the process works is it comes in through the cell phone towers, and then it brings to our office. If somebody went into Wyoming or into Utah and wanted to reach Wyoming, they would actually reach the Utah 2-1-1, but then they can transfer them back to our service and vice versa. In 2018, 2-1-1's across the country made over 12.8 million dollars, or 12.8 million calls to assistance. So that's how many referrals was made across the United States. And referrals most often made were for housing and utility assistance, physical or mental health services, assistance in finding and obtaining employment, and services to address and prevent homelessness. So who can benefit from utilizing 2-1-1? Essentially, everybody can utilize 2-1-1. So we often work with caseworkers who are trying to find services for those that they're trying to assist. So we can do a conference call with them and talk to them about the client situation and look for resources in our database that would best meet their needs. Grandparents in need of assistance with their grandchildren, families seeking services for their children, law enforcement officers. We work with our CIT team in Cheyenne, and they carry around our cards, and when they find those individuals who are in a bad way or just need some additional services, they'll give them a 2-1-1 card and say, "Call 2-1-1 in the morning and see what they can do to help you out." Veterans, we have partnered with the Wyoming Veterans Commission to ensure that we have a plethora of the veteran services in our database, those services that are outside of the VA. We have a lot of agencies across the state that help our veterans outside of that system. Those individuals looking for health insurance, seniors, human resource professionals, laid-off workers struggling to find employment, we're actually heading to Gillette on Thursday to do a resource fair with the workforce services office in Gillette for all of the minors who've been laid off. So we're going to be up there, and it's disaster victims seeking housing, food, and counseling. So how do we work? So as I mentioned, we are a centralized access point. So all they have to do is call 2-1-1, just dial 2-1-1. It's free and it goes to our cell phone, to our call center in Cheyenne. And they'll let us know what is their situation. And so the story that I like to, to give is a woman calls 2-1-1, and she is really upset because she just had her utilities turned off, and she doesn't know what to do because she's never held a position, she's got two kids at home, her husband just left her, and she doesn't have a job. And she doesn't know really what to do because she doesn't have any money. So her number one issue was she needs assistance with paying her utilities. So we can find those resources. In Cheyenne, we'll refer them to Grace Methodist Church, or Salvation Army, for example. And, but then we'll continue the conversation. And you mentioned that your husband just left, your child is having some anger issues and whatnot, so we can recommend counseling services for the, for the child, if that is something that she's interested in. We can also refer the mom to Cryin' Wyoming, for example, to help her with job training because she's never had a job before, she's a single mom, so it's a perfect fit for her. So while she's called for one service, we've actually gotten off the phone with her and she's feeling better about life because she's have, she has multiple avenues to help improve her life, to get on her way and get onto the next day. So that is, that is just a real quick, quick picture of 2-1-1. So in October of 2017, we underwent an expansive database conversion, and it took about one year to fully get our database converted over. And it has really been life-changing, I think, for Wyoming 2-1-1. It has given us a fresher, cleaner look to our website. It's a lot more user-friendly, and I'll go into our website here in just a moment. We have unlimited space for our agency's services and records, as well as client records, unlimited public access, and we also have API capabilities, which I think is really cool and something that I'm working on with the hospitals, where we can transfer our information from our database to another platform for caseworkers, for hospital caseworkers to utilize so that they don't have to have a list of their own to tap into for resources for their, for their patients as they are discharging. We also have a lot of automated features for our service providers to update their services at their agencies in our database, as well as somebody can go in and add their agency just through the website, which before we weren't able to do that. So the type of services that we accept into our database are federal, state, city, county, government services, as well as nonprofits. And I would say that nonprofits are the primary agency in our, in our database. We are continually adding services as well as updating that information because we want to make sure that what we are providing in referrals to that person in need is accurate and up-to-date. We don't want to be giving them erroneous information and leading them down a rabbit, a rabbit hole. So we also, in our database, we classify each of the services that these services provide in a tax-automated, if you will. And so these are the high-level classification of our services. So basic needs, obviously, is probably the most robust, and it includes services such as housing and utilities, food pantries and shelters and whatnot. And then you can see going on down that we have a lot of other services, mental health and substance use disorders, healthcare, education, criminal and legal services. This is, here is a snapshot of some of the resources that we have. And so you can see that we have anything from immunizations all the way to veterans fly fishing. So we have just a large span of information and referrals that are available to our citizens who are in need of a myriad of things, so food pantries, free tax assistance services. Obviously, we have all of our public officials, the sheriff and the fire departments and so on, a lot, all of our shelters across the state. So here, I wanted to break down, in the state of Wyoming, we have a total of 553 agencies in our database providing almost 2,000 services, and that number continues to grow. Since October of last year, we've added almost 700 new services to the database, and that's something that we've really taken on as a priority for the organization. The number of services specific to Nitrona County is 164, and multi-county or statewide services available to individuals in Nitrona County are 292 services. So this is our, our website, and I'm really excited about the look and feel of it. Up here, and this is an older screen, but there's a new, a new tab that talks about reports and analytics, and that's something that I wanted to draw your attention to, and I don't have a shot here, but you can go into that, into that link, and it will bring you up almost real-time data of the calls that were taken in on a daily basis. So you can drill down into it with the zip code, and you can pull up Casper, for example, and you will be able to identify what are those real-time needs that are taking place in the county. And it's, it's really fantastic, and you can narrow the dates of time and the range that you're looking for. You can do it 365 days, you can do it for the last week, or so on, and see how many calls are coming in. So I encourage you to get onto that. It's called 2-1-1 Counts, and it's a tab up at the top of our website. But we also have a very robust search function for those individuals who are looking for resources. And I am so sorry, but I'm standing right in the way. These are easy to, to navigate buttons where individuals can go in and they can click on a button, and it drops down, asks the user specific questions as to something perhaps that they might be looking for. And so then they can go in, and if they see something here, so if they're looking for parenting education, they can click on parenting education. It will show all of the services across the state, and then they can click on either agency, service, or site, and it will bring them into very robust information about that particular organization. So this screenshot is of the service, and that's where really the meat of all of our information is housed. The agency is about the parent company, the service is about what it is that they provide. So it offers up the eligibility, the application process, the hours, where they are, who they serve, what it is that they serve, so individuals can really identify, is this the right and appropriate service for what I'm looking for? They can also click here on advanced search, and they can put in anything specific here that they know what they're looking for. So they could put in the exact service name or So they could put in the exact service name, or a keyword, or an area served. So here, we've put in parent for a keyword and Sheridan for location. And again, it brings us to the service that ties into that particular organization. And again, you can see here, it's got a very robust eligibility process and all of the other information that's necessary to get in touch with this agency. So some of the other services that we provide, as I mentioned, we are working with disaster and crisis response. Wyoming two one one is contracted with the Department of Health as to be the stand-up call center in the event of a health epidemic. So if we have a major flu or measles epidemic and the Department of Health can't take on all of those calls, they will call two one one, ask them to stand up as the call center, have those calls forwarded to us, and we will relay the information as to what those individuals who are being affected by the disease and what those instructions are. So we are under contract with the Department of Health to do that. We're also working in conjunction with the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security. In each county, I'm working with also, haven't gotten around to everybody, I've started my conversations with Stacy Hill here to see how we can formulate a relationship in the event of a crisis or a disaster and how Wyoming two one one can assist in the process of helping with information dissemination. I was also recently nominated as the Wyoming State Boat Chair, and so I just took that position in June. So that gives me the opportunity to introduce Wyoming two one one, as well as work with those disaster response partners across the state. And so that will really, I think, those two positions really tie nicely together to help the state overall. And so I look forward to continuing to build that relationship. As I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, two one one can be used to assess the needs and find solutions in communities. We track a lot of demographic information. Of course, with every phone call, we track the presenting need, any unmet needs during that call, and then all of the referrals that we make. We can gather all of this information and compile it for each of the counties. We provide quarterly reports to the state. And then, as counties request it, we will provide that on an as-needed basis and as-requested basis. So here's just a glimpse of some of the information that we collect. In two thousand eighteen, we took in thirty-four hundred calls and we provided over five thousand referrals to those individuals. Last year, we only did a full intake for twelve percent of our callers. A full intake is where we collect a full screening of information, of demographic information, from those clients. And I feel that that's a very important part of our conversation with individuals so that we can then relay back to each of the counties as to who it is that's calling in and what do these individuals look like, what populations are calling in, so that we can better relay back to you what's happening in your communities. So this is a sample of the information that we take. So we'll collect information on annual income, age, employment, gender. Are you on food stamps? Do you have a disability? Are you a veteran? Do you have health insurance? And there's a whole other list of information that we collect as well. I gave you a breakdown here also of the number of calls that we took in in two thousand eighteen for Nitrona County. We took in four hundred and sixty-six calls and made almost one thousand referrals to those individuals in need. The top presenting need across the state, in Nitrona County, was housing and utilities, healthcare and utility assistance. And that is a common theme, a consistent theme across the state. So when I did a roadshow for WAM and was able to break down every county in the state, and it was consistent across the board that utilities and housing, transportation and food were all up in the top five. Unmet need here in Nitrona County was transportation, housing, and motel bill assistance payment. We also track why a referral wasn't given and what was not available for those individuals when they requested. So we're able to break it down to this level of detail for you so you know what's missing in your community and why the service wasn't, why it wasn't met. So I started one year ago in June and really took a hard look at what was going on in two one one. And we have been in existence since two thousand eleven. And when I took the position, I really found that very few people knew about two one one. So I've made it my mission and my priority to make sure that we have statewide visibility because we are a statewide organization. And I want to make sure that we're touching as many people as possible on who we are and what we can offer in educating as many folks as possible, particularly our service providers, so that we have this reciprocal referral process going back and forth. I really feel that two one one is a partner for all of our service providers across the state because, again, they also have a marketing restriction as well, and it's called money. And so when you have two one one helping them drive individuals, clients, to their services, that takes a little bit of a burden off of them. And they're also receiving those clients who are actually eligible for their service. We have also made it our mission to add more resources to our database. When we did the database conversion, we made a very large effort in making sure that all of our resources were cleaned up, that all of our information was consistent. And so when we're pulling information out, it looks the same record to record to record. It doesn't have, you know, a gobbledygook mess everywhere. So we have good, solid information in our database, and I think that that's really important. The last thing here is reducing the duplication of efforts. Because so many service providers did not know about two one one, they were often taking time and even hiring individuals to create their own resource list or creating their own databases and whatnot. And so we're really trying to help reduce that duplication of effort because that is our mission, and that's what we're here for. We're here to serve the state of Wyoming. And we can reduce that duplication for those service providers so that they don't have to waste time creating those lists. We realize that's not going to entirely go away, and I don't have a problem with that. But let us help you with that. We're also looking to diversify our funding, building our board statewide. I think it's important to have statewide representation from all different career paths as well. And then recruit community liaisons across the state to help me spread the word because I can't be everywhere, unfortunately. One of my outcomes was to increase our call volume and number of referrals by thirty percent and increase the number of resources by twenty percent, and that's by the end of two thousand nineteen. So far, we've already increased the number of calls in our database by about fifty percent. So I'm very excited about that. We're still working on call volume, and I think that's directly related to visibility. We do a lot of different forms of marketing and outreach. And so we have rad cards, posters, and I've given you some samples of what I have. We also have a very robust social media presence. We're on Facebook, on Instagram, Pinterest, LinkedIn. So that's going really well. And then, of course, we get out and about as much as humanly possible. I have my database curator, and we often split the difference. She's heading to Gillette, I'm in Casper all week. So it's, you know, we work really well as a team, but we try and get out and talk to folks as much as possible. We are funded by the Wyoming Department of Health. Fifty percent of our operating budget comes from the Department of Health. The rest of the funding, we go out and we do fundraising, and we write lots of grants. We also have just engaged in a contract with the Wyoming Department of Family Services to start a kinship navigator program. We are just kicking that program off. It's piloting in Nitrona and Laramie County, and I'm very, very excited to be able to do that here. We chose those two counties because Laramie and Casper have the two highest number of grandparents taking care of their grandchildren. And so that's why we chose these two counties to start off with. And we are actually going to be housed with the Parents as Teacher Program in the NowCap campus. So we're very excited to be present in Casper. Grants from CRMC, United Way, the Community Foundation, and so on. And I just continue to write grants so that we can get funded and be sustainable forever. One thing that I think is really important to note, that we have a collaboration with Enroll Wyoming. And Enroll Wyoming is the entity that was established when the ACA came about in two thousand thirteen. And so we help individuals who don't have health insurance get insured. So they can contact two one one and let us know that they are in need of health insurance, and we can go through their eligibility and determine whether they're eligible for the marketplace or if they are eligible for Medicaid. And so we can go through that whole process. If they need to speak with an individual navigator, then we can forward them on to the main navigators to do that face-to-face time so that they can fill out those applications together. We are also a member of the Wyoming Homeless Collaborative. So Wyoming two one one, again, central access point for individuals who are homeless. We can gather their information and put that into the HMIS system so that the caseworkers around the state can identify what the needs are of these homeless individuals, prioritize them, and then go out and help them to get them into a more sustainable housing situation. And then, of course, we're always at the table with regard to suicide prevention and other prevention activities. Social media, I've already discussed. And I just want to say thank you so very much for taking your time to hear about two one one. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything for you. I know you have a busy agenda, so I didn't want to take up too much of your time. But thank you for your time.
Questions versus agreement? Any privacy concerns with sharing names?
We don't share names. Everything that comes into two one one is confidential. So while we do collect it, it's about a person-to-person conversation. We do not disclose that information to anybody.
Provide options to people without?
Correct, yep. We take their address and zip code so that we can locate those community resources in their community. I know I really just zoomed through this, but I realized that you have a lot on your agenda. So there's probably a lot that I missed, but I'm happy to have a conversation if anybody has questions later on.
Probably won't have some rain up here again for a while, so it's your chance.
Very good.
Thank you for coming all this way.
Thanks for the invitation.
It's important work that you're doing.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Set to have a safe drive.
Thanks.
Okay, on to Parade and Special Events Guide. Mr. City Manager, could you tell us where we left off on this and what we need to resolve this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council will certainly give that a shot. What I recall, the direction of the council was dealt specifically with regard to the appeal process in the event that a permit was rejected by staff. And so the resolution that you have in front of you, ordinance, excuse me, deals with primarily the timeframes by which that process could be accommodated, depending on what council would like to see. For example, the changes that we made are with regard to the days by which the police department has to review the parade permit kind of application, which we changed it from ten to two. And also the timeframe by which notification would take place and subsequent appeal, if that should be necessary. And that has been extended to twenty days. So within three days, the applicant would be notified of a rejection, if you will. And then, the applicant would then have the choice of initiating the appeal process with the council by which that remaining period of twenty days would then be in effect. So that, in my recollection, was the chief thing that council directed staff to do. And accordingly, we've given you a suggestion, and we'd be open for your direction otherwise. Hi?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea of those timeframes, but my only question would be to the chief. Do those timeframes sound workable to you? You know, it's not going to do anybody any good if we pass an ordinance that, then when it hits the ground, it's just not going to work.
Mayor, councilman, those timeframes will work if everything is functioning correctly. It's entirely possible that persons are not present, they're needed to forward that through. So it could be problematic, but I would say the vast majority of it can be done in that timeframe.
Thank you. Bob?
One of the things that, I'm sure you're aware of this, chief, and fellow council members, but I think, you know, the sooner people want to do something like that and at least go make the acquaintance of what the system is, that probably would precipitate a number of meetings if changes needed to be made before you put in a final plan. And I assume that we'll encourage people to do that. I mean, if somebody wants to have a relatively major parade, just to walk in and use these numbers that we put in here. Well, I agree with the numbers. It would probably behoove people to get a little head start on it and at least have a preliminary conversation. Is that a fair statement?
Mayor, council, you know, I view this as we always have, as a dialogue and a communication tool with our citizens. As they have those, you know, they may have an overall good plan that we may want to tweak a little bit, to give them time, you know, so we would anticipate that we could make suggestions and receive input back from them before they decide that, hey, this isn't working and it needs to go to an appeal process. You know, so I think they're, you know, under the current iteration, that gives us plenty of time to communicate with the citizens, determine their needs, review our concerns, find a solution to that before that time period for the appeal process wanes.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
This really was the issue you brought, Steve. If I remember correctly, that we didn't have a deadline for a response, so. I wonder if we, Mr. Vice Mayor?
This is for Mr. Henley. You said that this also encompasses protests, a permit process, will that?
It certainly could because you may want to have with your parade sometimes, or with your protest, sometimes go for a march up and down a particular street, or a block, or something like that. So true.
So as far as the insurance requirement, I don't know if you've covered this or not, but I found a court case that says that the government cannot use an insurance requirement to bar protests for a group that unsuccessfully attempted to obtain insurance.
And I think that there is a restriction on governments. When you have some type of a prior restraint, there is a higher standard. So as a government, you don't want to be in a situation where you can put in roadblocks, essentially. It would keep people from protesting and talking about whatever they're going to talk about. On the other hand, you know, so that would draw to the attention of one. In this case, you have the option to bring that to the attention of the city government. You may also have the option to file an appeal or go to the city council and take care of that. So there is that, there are those remedies that would be in effect. It's always a balance. So you have someone who wants to have a protest, but we want to have a protest because we want to have, you know, one person in every intersection over a square mile with one sign and one light pointed towards the sky. They're going to shut down your town. You can't do things of that nature. So as long as you're providing some alternatives, you have to be reasonable and thoughtful in doing it and there's a certain amount of good faith that goes along with that. There's also, the Supreme Court has said that they like to have some type of more definable standards so that the people who are making those decisions can actually rely upon those standards and then they have to articulate why we're doing those standards, which would be adopted organs or Special Events Policy Guide. And that can be checked with that. So that if there is an appeal, you may say, the police choose this. You know, this is, this particular intersection, it can't let parade go in this intersection, and that's because of this. And if that relates to this particular concern set forth in your ordinance, then you can say, huh, that is? Or no, I think that can still be looked at. And so in that regard, I think it's always good to consider that. And I think, you know, that's a good question and a good point to make. When you have people that may protest, may want to talk about something that's important to them and not be important to a lot of other people, but it's important to them, that's what I've been.
I guess my question was, could we or would we bar somebody from getting a permit that didn't get the insurance requirement, or couldn't afford the insurance requirement?
You know, it certainly could start out that way. I mean, if you're going to have a huge number of people here, you'll see that if it's just a smaller type of group, there's really no requirement in insurance because they have, we've already cracked that. You know, if you said we're going to have three thousand people here, and we're going to have this parade, I think, you know, the usual standard would say, hey, what if we have three thousand people here? They're going to be out in the streets, there's a possibility of someone being injured. We would like you to get this insurance. And they say, geez, we just have no ability to do that. And then it would probably end up in your lap.
Right, because in that same court case, it says that there has to be an exemption for groups that cannot afford to pay the charge. for groups that cannot afford to pay the charge, which includes insurance.
Yeah, and I don't know which case you're talking about, I did find the case I think that Mr. Pat was talking about at one point, and he was, he said it was Forsyth versus Georgia. Actually, I looked at the, tried to look that up the last time, and I couldn't ever find it. And then I did some additional searching, and I found it this afternoon, and it's Forsyth County versus National Movement. And that was a 1992 case, and the case that I referred to when I talked with you was a 2002 case. So I think we are looking good there. I would say, yeah, if, but in fact, there is some actual evidence that people cannot do this, then you have to implement and exercise your authority, or the person overseeing the review process would exercise their authority. But your fees here are very reasonable relative to what the Supreme Court cases have talked about, and the question would be, could someone consist upon, you know, ten million dollars in insurance, which nobody can afford, for a group of two hundred protesters, which we're not going to have that problem because of the way that the Special Events Guide is permitted. I'll tell you, though, after I did look at that Forsyth case, there are a couple of squishy phrases within the events guide, and, well, I do think that we're probably ready if you want to go forward with this in the next meeting, we can do that, but I would like to have the ability to maybe make some changes in conjunction with, or just to kind of dialogue some of those things. And in that regard, Mayor Council, there were a couple provisions within the events guide that said... That this may deny any type of event team not to be in the best interest of the city. It's like, well, it has no context at all, so that would be something I think you would like to work on, and, but I think we'd be ready to have this for your review over this coming weekend, and have it come back up for first reading on next Tuesday night, if you would so desire, or we can put it off for another work session and have you look at it again after we had an opportunity to go in and tighten up some of those useful phrases.
I'd like to send you these two cases I found, and just give me what you think of the later.
I appreciate it. Sure.
Krista?
Now that we're talking about it, I was trying to scroll through and look, do we have, where we define the difference between like a protest and maybe a parade?
You know, we have that, the parade is relatively well-defined, but that is, that really is the only definition that we can have in the parade limits, as you might expect. But it is defined broadly enough there that it could include a protest, and that's, so that's the way it is right now. You know, I don't know if there's some possibility of diminishing that, because, well, it's a protest, I want to protest the fact that we're getting daylight savings, so, versus I want to protest civil rights, or I want to protest religious nonfreedom, or something along those lines. So then you get into context situations, which brings up a whole another can of worms and this and that, but it really is an odd balancing, difficult balancing, though, for compensation.
Well, since there would potentially be, is not the right word, and I apologize, a loophole out of insurance for a protest, I would just get worried that if we don't have it clearly defined, then basically anyone applying for the permit could be, well, you know, we're protesting whatever it may be, and therefore, we don't have this insurance requirement. So I think we might, and I, obviously, I think we probably need to be careful when we define them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, anytime you get into content, oh, you were just putting your chin up there, afraid you were going to get whacked off.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's important, take me in this Reed case, and I think you guys, you recall me talking about the past, anytime you start talking about content, boy, it's tough.
Yeah.
So therefore, you know, we're really talking about time, place, boundaries, that type of thing, and not so much content. But I would be happy to look at those cases, Council Johnson, if we can tighten it up in an additional way, too.
Yeah.
I'm all for it.
Other questions for John, or comments? I guess my question is for you, Chief, I'm just concerned about the timeframes, and I wonder, I'm just thinking out loud here, if someone's going to do this for the first time, the only, the only time limits they're given are two days ahead of time, and I wonder if it wouldn't make sense to say, in the case of larger events, a notice of two weeks is preferred, or something, because you're going to, you have to deal with staffing requirements, you may have to pull people off their schedule if there's a large event to create, to make sure things are safe, and if everyone, if everyone looking at this just says, well, I can just put this in two days ahead of time.
It's like, twenty.
Twenty days. Oh, okay, I missed that. So where does it say that?
Yes, I was like, what?
That's the appeal process. Excuse me, my misread.
Correct.
Okay. Never mind. Now, has everyone read the appeal process on page, page forty-six? I'm sorry, do you want to comment on that, John?
Oh, if you would mind.
I just misread it, so we can just strike that from the record.
Well, actually, the minimum time to file for a parade permit under three of the event sizes would be either thirty-five days for a large event, twenty-five days for a medium event, twenty days for a small event, or a negligible event. So we have that twenty-five days, but it still places the police department, I thought, in a pretty difficult position by just saying you have two business days to make the decision. So the application comes in, it gets taken from the city clerk's office to the police chief's office, you have two business days then for them to make a decision, and then they have to on that next third day after they've received it. Then they have to notify by email the applicant, at first, and the clerk. And so that really is, I think it's a good point to be made, that really is, it seemed to me that when this came up the last time, that was a pretty short time period for the police department to do their job at.
Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of different things. First, with reference to the vice mayor's concerns, if you look in this event guide where it says, "Application conditions and denials," it says the city may base its denial on one or more of the following things, part of which would be the application for your permit, or required insurance hasn't been obtained. It doesn't say that the city must, and so I think this is pretty artfully drawn to give guidance to the city, but also to allow for some accommodation in there for what Vice Mayor Johnson's worrying about, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to have this protest here, but I can't afford to pay a bunch of money for insurance or something, and you're, you know, this is a free speech issue, blah, blah, blah. I think that there's, this language is broad enough to, you know, cover that, and so I really think that's pretty artfully drawn in that respect. Question, the further question or comment that I have is just kind of looking at this in general, that, you know, the way that legislation and rules and things, and I know that there's some people in the room that are going to cringe when I say this, Councilman Kathy, that you have a general over, superstructure of the law, the statute and ordinance, and then you flesh out some of those details with rules and regulations. And the reason that you do that is because it's easier to then come back and change if you find that, you know, that, well, this, this detail or that detail just doesn't work. You can come back and change that rule or regulation easier than you can go and change a whole statute or ordinance or anything. Looking at this that way, I'm wondering if it would be, if it'd make more sense and be less confusing to people if we put all these timeframes into the Special Events Guide, into the resolution part of this, and just simply refer people in the parade thing, that okay, if we're looking at the time elements and the time limits, that's all set forth in the Special Events Guide, and doing that, does that make sense to anybody, or?
I could simply say that timelines are...
Yeah, so that...
Please reference the guide for time.
Yeah, so that people, I'm wondering if that would minimize the having to jump back and forth and make it easier for people to see that, well, okay, wait a minute now, but, you know, there are these things that are in the parade ordinance, and then the how to do it is more here in the event guide, and...
Comments?
Contrary, contrary to popular belief, I think that's probably a fairly good idea.
Oh, now I'm worried.
Yeah, you better be. Because Mike does bring up a very good point. If we put all of that in the ordinance, and then we find that, you know, we really aren't able to make this in two days, we need five, well, we've got to go back through the whole ordinance process again, but if in the ordinance itself, you put in there must-follow timelines as specified in the current edition of the Special Events Guide, then all we have to do is go in and update the Special Events Guide to maybe go from twenty days to twenty-three, which would then give five business days, and, you know, just add a few more days in there, change the date on the events guide and go on, and it never has to come here, in essence, so.
Other comments?
Sense.
Any of it? Would it turn us about doing that?
A killer, John, for you to redraft that?
Certainly not, yeah, and if you have some suggested timeframes, that would be one in two.
The timeframes seem fine to me, but I'm just concerned about if we find that any of these details like that are not working, the cumbersome process of having to amend ordinance, number one, and I'm concerned about that if I'm some poor schmuck that wants to have an event, you know, well, I got to look over here, I got to go look over there, and, you know, try to make that a little bit easier for people.
So all the existing timelines would be just moved over into the events guide, basically?
That's what I'm suggesting.
And then refer to them in the ordinance. Reactions, is everybody, I think I'm seeing some head nods, you want to, Ken? Chief, does you want to comment?
You know, I'm sitting here kind of reviewing the last year and a half in my mind on the two-day, the two-day limit for us to respond to it, and there's been, in my short time period here, there's been several incidents that have arisen in our community where I didn't even see my office for extended period of time, you know, working twenty-four hours a day somewhere else remotely to handle whatever incident had occurred. So I, and, you know, I was asked the question earlier, can we do it in two days? My response was yes, if everything's working perfectly, but in the realities of the world is it doesn't always work perfectly, so I might recommend to the council that they consider extending that two days, just enough to, you know, to give us, to work around the possibility so that we're not, we're not causing contention when circumstances outside of our control prevented a normal response within two days.
What would you suggest?
You know, I think five days gives me, gives me that, that business week, but it doesn't intrude unnecessarily on the applicant's time period. They've done it, you know, according to these guidelines, they've gotten us that application in enough time, it allows me the time to, to meet with them and discover their concerns and find a workaround for it. I think that five days, I'll be able, let me, Councilman, Mayor, I apologize, I've signed three of these today. We're, we're pretty, you know, they, every day I sign one of these. The clerk's office handles these on a, you know, on a major portion of their workload. So we're fairly proficient at it, and we're very good at contacting people and making, you know, we need to, this, everything's good except for this one thing, can we address that one thing? So if we can just, I hate being boxed in when I know for a fact that things happen in my profession that sometimes can get in the way of this.
Carter? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Attorney or Madam Clerk, what I understood was that regardless of when the person was notified, their twenty-day clock starts at the point that they are notified, not as a part of the days that have already been eaten up through the review process. Is that not correct?
That is not correct, under the current ordinance.
Okay.
So at least for the parade portion of it, that would not be correct. Under the regular special events portion, say you're going to just have a school pick pack or something, and that would be, that would be accurate.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think we could mitigate the issue of giving the police department the adequate time by allowing for the appeal process time clock to start upon notification, so that twenty-day period of time that needs to elapse or could elapse would start upon notification versus whenever it is that the permit is actually filed.
The problem we're trying to solve here is we don't want someone who's planning an event to be sitting in limbo, not one, not knowing whether they're going to be able to have their event or not, and waiting on the police department to finally give them a ruling, and all their planning is just on hold, if I remember correctly. Steve, were you waiting, Ken? Steve, go ahead.
Oh, basically, and you pointed out to Mr. Mayor exactly what I was going to bring up, is that if you have a date picked out, the twentieth of September, and I turn it in twenty days ahead of time per the event guide, I can't, there is no time clock to start in there. My time clock started the day I turned the permit in, so if we really want to allow the police department the five days in there, then we need to change that twenty days to twenty-three days, that, because basically, we already had two days built in, so to give the other three, we would need to, need to add three days on to all of those filing dates, which would then accommodate everything, so the twenty would go to twenty-three, the thirty-five would go to thirty-eight, and whatever the other ones were in there, which would then give you the five days, they would still have the twenty days then to be able to make other arrangements.
Chief, go ahead. Our intention is to turn these out just as fast as, you know, like I say, today, three of them hit my desk today, three of them have been executed today. That is going to, that is going to be the case ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the time. So I, it's not, my wish is to convey to council that this is going to be something that occurs, it's going to bind people up. Our goal is to serve our public and do it in a timely manner. We're acutely sensitive of their need to plan and to commit, you know, to buy supplies and organize volunteers. We're going to try to facilitate that each and every time. I just, my prior comments have perhaps built me a little bit more time in there, it was just on the what-if basis. I didn't want to arbitrarily give people something to, you know, to think ill of us when in fact we had something, some other higher priority going.
Chief, when you're absent, obviously, you have an acting chief that has the authority to sign these.
Yes, Mayor, yes, Council, you know, but the reality is, is that, you know, there are key people in this, in this movement, and when it's working smoothly is when I have Sergeant Bullard, who reviews the traffic needs of it, and I don't see him until it's got his signature on him. So if Sergeant Bullard's gone, I, you know, I got to have a system in place to do that. We do, but it's every time one person in that cog or that will is missing, then it, you know, it builds in opportunities for small delays. I'm just trying to apply some reality to it, but our intent certainly is one that is customer service oriented, and we recognize the urgency for those people that are planning whatever event that they are.
So you would ask that we give you five, but more often than not, you're still going to hit two?
I'm going to have it done in one more often than not.
All right. Is everyone okay with that? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if in the dear customer part of this event guide, if it might not be a good idea to put it, put some language in there that says, you are hereby advised, or cautioned, or something, that the application and review process and everything may take up to a total of, you know, thirty-eight days or, you know, whatever we decide on, and therefore you are encouraged to begin this process as far ahead of time as possible, so that people aren't just looking at this and thinking it's going to be just, you know, just automatically real quick.
It's sort of what I was saying earlier with my gaffe, is kind of saying, please, please be as courteous as possible and give us as much time as possible so that we can...
Well, but I wonder if it wouldn't be more of a service to people that are coming in to apply for this, if we just tell them upfront, this might take up to a month, you know, we'll get it done as quickly as we can, but please be advised that all these very, you know, including all the various deadlines it may take, you know, including the appeal process or anything. it may take up that, that far ahead." Now, I, I don't, if I had any inclination that anybody was dragging one of these out or something, I'd be the first guy to be jumping up and down and unhappy about it, but, you know, in fairness to people that are applying for this.
Mr. Henley, what would you think about adding a, just a please be courteous sort of paragraph? Is that, and please be aware that there could be more steps than you.
We can do that.
I mean, are you understanding, how would people feel about something like that, just kind of a, for the first time applicant to kind of understand that this is a process that could take some time? Steve?
Something that we need to do, and I don't know of a good, I'll be honest, I don't know of a good way to do it right now, but this is bringing up a point again that we addressed the other time on the tree ordinance, is that basically if the citizens don't know to ask the right questions, that same accident can happen again regardless of our ordinance. So somehow we need to start getting communication out to the public that, hey, if you're in the business of, or if you want to, then this is what we need to do. If you need trees removed, you need to be asking, are they licensed? Are they bonded? Do they have insurance? But we have a big education problem, is what I would say, along the lines with most of our rules and things that we come up with.
Well, that's the way, that's the way I hear the suggestion, is a kind of an explanation in the, in the guide itself.
Because we were looking at maybe having a block party, and I figured, sure, I can go down there and, you know, fill out a deal, and in a couple of days have a deal to be able to close our little cul-de-sac, and nah, it isn't gonna happen.
But if you had the event guide in front of you and you looked at it.
Didn't even, but if I went in there and didn't even know it existed the week before, it's.
Well, that's, that's why we, that's why we talk about these things twelve times, so that.
Oh, I know. But I would like, people like the gentleman behind you to put articles out on the, on the news waves that they need to be coming for.
And then we gotta move on, guys.
Yeah. What, what I was gonna suggest, it, we just suggest something in the line of it says, "We suggest coming in and have a pre-conference meeting before you fill out any applications." That's really what we're saying, and I, I think that's fairly easy to do.
Is everybody okay with that? Thor, can you put something like that in the, in the file? All right, so then are we ready to move forward with this, with those changes? Ken?
The only thing I got is if a person, I'd like to see the insurance maybe changed, not the insurance itself, but if I go to one event and I go through everything, I have to get the insurance, the police chief says, mm, this isn't gonna work, I appeal to you guys, I say, hey, this is what, and the council says, no, I'm out two hundred and some odd dollars because I had to get the insurance in order to not be rejected. And that's two hundred, I'm out, I don't get my parade, I don't get, I'm, I'm done, and plus all the application fees. I would at least like to see something of, you apply for it, but the last step in order for it to be completely approved would be you have to have the insurance, and just kind of still stay with the insurance. I agree with that a hundred percent, but change it just a bit that somebody that gets denied, not out all that money for the insurance.
Although I don't, I, we haven't had very many denials, have we, Chief?
Mayor, council, we're not in the business of denying. The only, the only thing that we've done is gone back to some applicants and say, the route or the location is inappropriate. We want to support the event, but this particular route or location is, is inappropriate for, you know, fill in the blank, public safety reasons.
As opposed to you're not doing this?
I, I have never denied one.
All right.
We're gonna, the police department's gonna be very supportive of our citizens and their, their choice to gather, to celebrate, to protest. We don't care. Whatever, whatever the cause celeb is, is not, and we, that does not figure into our thought process whatsoever. We're gonna support that and do everything we can. We do have to make sure that I'm meeting the public safety goals. I have reiterated to the council before that once we enter into and issue this permit, we have established a special relationship with that group, which implies we're gonna provide a safe environment for them to conduct their event. So I do have to be mindful of, I can't have, you know, it can't be an event that's construed in such a way that, that might lend itself to accidents because it makes us liable, because we've entered into that special relationship with them.
That's the thing. Thank you for bringing it up, because that's really the crux of this, is we do it, do it, having some liability once we approve something. Right?
The other thing is, is I have concern about pre-meetings, because I think Carl would do nothing but meet with people constantly. And I, I think that that's what we're trying to avoid, so I don't know if that's such a good idea, and I would be against putting that in there. I just want to do less work for these guys. You do a ton of the overtime, so. That's where I'm at on that. I don't know if anybody supports it, but I won't support that.
Maybe for the larger events, to put that in as a caveat for the larger events?
For the larger events, Carl, okay.
Okay. We okay with those changes, the five days, the, the education piece in the guide, taking all the time requirement, timelines out of the ordinance and put them into the guide and refer to them from the ordinance? So, and are you guys pretty clear on where to go with this then? Okay. Good enough. Let's move on. Okay. Green Valley, annexation status report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This is the step in the process wherein, as a part of the third reading, which comes up on Tuesday, you will also in tandem be accepting the annexation report, which as you probably recall, is a statutorily required report that is prepared to answer very basic questions with respect to the characteristics of the annexation. Primarily, those issues would be along the lines of costs expected for the city to take on the area of concern or interest, costs anticipated to be borne by the residents of the subject area, services that might need to be extended, that may not be available, and those kinds of things. And it even goes to the extent of detailing exactly where, in relation to the city, the area is, and the level of contiguous and so forth involved in, in the relationship with the, the city's limits. Tonight, we wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions that the report may have brought about. I will tell you that I, I believe the report was very well done. It deals with a lot of those questions and, and the kinds of things that are behind the spirit of the, the statutory obligation. The, the thrust behind the report and the answers that the report provides are primarily found in the conclusion, where it details not only what it is that we think would be a revenue impact to the organization if indeed the annexation proceeds, but also what the cost impact might be, both to the resident and the organization. The, the ideal with respect to this area being a target for annexation is that in fact, there are very few services and expansions of infrastructure necessary to make this annexation come to pass. I certainly have been involved in, in annexations where indeed those weren't necessarily an easy answer, but in, in regards to the area that we're talking about, the, the trailer park area east, west of Robertson Road, we, we did not find that extension of services or networks or changing in the way in which services are, are delivered is a requirement for this annexation. And so, to, to me, that makes this annexation area almost optimal with respect to moving forward and potentially receiving the, the revenue benefits that this projects to receive. Particularly when you look at the costs that the residents will bear, it is almost absolutely nonexistent. So my recommendation would wholeheartedly be to accept the annexation report as a part of the third reading of the ordinance coming up on Tuesday night and moving forward.
Questions, comments? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate that it's, it's always about money, except when it's about money. But to me, the more important thing with these kind of things is it just makes sense to, to do this kind of an annexation. You know, now if the finances were totally, completely just really upside down and prohibitive, that might be a different thing. But absent that, I would urge that when we have these unannexed islands, that it just makes sense to, to clean up those boundaries and, and to, to do these things. And I, I, I don't like the idea of saying, well, it's, it's about money, but I know that it's always about money. To me, it's just better management to do this.
Other comments, questions? I know you addressed insurance, and with our, our fire rating being, I believe, as high, is, are we at the highest level possible, Chief?
Yes, sir.
That, I would think that would factor in pretty positively for folks as they kept, check with their insurance companies, that we have that rating. Okay. Everybody forward? Go, little forward with this? Okay, great. Appreciate it. Okay. Memorials, donations, and sponsorship policy. Carter?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this has been a, a very interesting conversation, and one of which that I would recommend every city and town ought to consider at some point. Because indeed, the trend is that memorials and signage and so forth, recognizing individuals and perhaps organizations in the community, is becoming more prevalent and, and very appealing to, to a lot of groups. The, the policy that you have in front of you is a policy that's, you know, largely worked on and, and written by, by Mr. Cortez and Mr. Henley in, in partnership with each other. But what they, what they sought to do was look into some of the best businesses, best business practices that are out there pertaining to this type of a policy directive, along with some of the demands that we're seeing locally as it relates to erecting memorials and, and recognitions throughout our community. We, I believe that we've found a nice balance here as it relates to a policy approach to dealing with this, this, this question, if you will. Certainly, I have seen in, in points throughout my past, some very difficult and uncomfortable scenarios that arise when a policy is not well-established and, and put into place. And so I'm very thankful that you're willing to look at this and, and erect some level of structure that would help us moving forward. If indeed you would like to hear more from Mr. Cortez and perhaps Mr. Henley pertaining to some of the nuances here, we're prepared to do that this evening as well.
Would either of you like to speak on this, or does the document speak for itself? Would you mind just giving us a scenario that created some of that discomfort without naming names? Carter, just give us an example, the kind of thing that you've seen that really requires this, so the public, so I guess the public could understand the reason behind, reasoning behind this?
There's a couple of them that stand out in my mind that were very uncomfortable. At, at one point, there was a, I won't say in what community or to, to what party, of course, but there was a, an impromptu memorial erected for an individual who had passed away. And unfortunately, in this scenario, that individual passed away by means inflicted upon him or herself, suicide. Furthermore, that suicide was predicated upon some very disturbing charges that were being leveled against the individual, and, you know, charges that claimed a lot of victims and, and so forth. And so when that memorial was erected, without the, again, the benefit of a policy that structured that type of placement, it created a, a huge community upheaval and a very, very uncomfortable outcomes that resulted. And so from my standpoint, particularly the individual that had to deliver some of those very uncomfortable outcomes, I really relished the notion of having a policy that would have protected against those kinds of things. Another sort of less serious example was with regard to an overproliferation of memorials and so forth for particular service agencies and whatnot in a particular area, or with respect to pieces and parts and memorials that the, the city just simply wasn't equipped to, to maintain and, and handle. Again, a well-written policy can help manage that a little better than having the, you know, the difficult situation of the community being upset about an oversaturation, if you will, of some of those types of recognitions. So those are a couple of quick examples that come to mind that, that I think this policy helps us address.
Questions, comments? So the, your, your direction requested, what direction would you like for us to go, have, go ahead and have a resolution put on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, that would be ideal, pending council's satisfaction with what we've proposed.
People need more time to think through this or read through it again? Are we ready to have this put on our agenda for next week? Would it be on next week's, Mr. City Manager?
It would be either next week or very soon thereafter.
Okay. Every, everyone's okay? All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on this, gentlemen. Okay. Now, we already covered six, did we not?
I, I feel comfortable that we have.
That context-sensitive amenities is the, is the bridge and the widening, the ten-foot walkways on the bridge, the very item we just, we just started with this evening. So we are moving right along. Let's go to our agenda for the seventeenth and see if anyone has any questions, concerns about that agenda.
Are you gonna go through it, or are you just asking?
We're just, I'm just asking for comments on it. More questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the tree cutting resolution, ordinance, I should say. Where was it here? Yes, the third one down on the second page. Commending chapter twelve point thirty-two regarding trees and shrubs. Right now, we state that if there's any aerial work or tree removal, it has to be done with a licensed arborist on location. Received a call, and I think, Mr. Henley, you may have even received a call, about wanting to exclude demolition contractors when they are basically demolishing a property. In other words, like when they came in and took out everything along Collins Street, trees, buildings, everything. When they're there with a big Trac-O, just basically demolishing everything, do we really have to have a licensed arborist there for them to shove a tree over and throw it into a grinder with a D eight or a big Trac-O? And so that was a question that was posed to me by a demolition contractor that, when they're, and now, they, they can't go into a, a residence that's still gonna be standing and remove trees. This would only be if they're going in to basically level a property.
Steve?
Well, I guess in, in response to that, my question would be, is the main purpose they have in an arborist there is to make sure that we're not felling trees the wrong directions and, and causing accidents. And so if you have a tree that's a certain height that, that you're gonna, whether you're demolishing it or not, you still need somebody there to make sure that it's being dropped in the right direction and not, no one's gonna, that's the way out, like, nobody's gonna get harmed by doing so.
What about the building they're tearing down? Do I have to have a structural engineer on site to make sure the building doesn't fall the wrong direction? Mike?
A question or a thought that I have about this, and I'm really in favor of the idea of licensing arborists and everything. But, you know, if you're having your house rewired or replumbed or whatever, the licensed master plumber doesn't have to be there all the time. the licensed master plumber doesn't have to be there all the time. The licensed electrician doesn't have to be there all the time. They, you know, they can have employees there doing work. And I'm much more concerned about what plumbers and electricians do than tree cutters and arborists. So I'm a little bit puzzled about how do you strike the balance there, you know, saying that, well, okay, the licensed guy, you know, somehow trees are more dangerous than electricity or gas or whatever. I don't know what the balance is there.
I guess my reaction is that, you know, some, there are, usually on customary standards as far as how you wire a house and how you plumb a house, and it's very predictable what will happen if you do it a certain way with a tree. There's a lot of other variables as far as which way it goes and...
And that might be that's what I'm worried about.
There's just some risks there that you can only know about if you...
That are right now, as opposed to we can inspect it.
That'd be my reaction, that there are some differences. Sean?
Well, we do this in response to an incident that happened. And would this amendment, if we'd done it earlier, stop that incident happening? I don't think so.
Because they just...
They didn't ask the questions.
They didn't ask the questions.
So really, I don't, I see it as pointless and as more of an emotional reaction to an incident happening, the whole thing.
Well, with those, but those individuals in that particular incident were in violation of the ordinance on group of sight. Steve?
Well, it wasn't really the family that brought it forward, correct? It wasn't at the arborist himself that are asking for this initially?
The arborist that are, there were some, I have concerns on what this will do to smaller, even one or two man operations. The ones that are asking for this are larger companies. Of course, I mean, if you can eliminate some competition via government regulation, then I would... I'm gonna vote no on it altogether.
Kristen and then Steve.
I guess to me, when we say it in that sense, what we're ultimately saying is the certification must be almost impossible or so expensive to get that it puts somebody out of business or unless you had been in the industry for twenty years, you couldn't qualify. Is it really that steep and difficult to obtain the certification?
I don't know anything about that.
According to the...
Ken, Steve, sorry.
Well, it was kind of the same question I had. I mean, in response to what you just said, I mean, whether it's a big company trying to put out a little company, I mean, you can't be a contractor without a contractor's license, you gotta come down and get it. So, you know, I don't think it's necessarily that. I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna build houses, you gotta get your license in place. If you wanna cut down trees and it becomes a thing where you have to have an arborist there, then it's just one of those things, it's not adding more regulation to it.
Ken?
Nothing.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we can probably respond a little bit to Councilman Bates.
To provide that information, please.
Tim, do you wanna address what it takes to become an arborist since we have a few licenses?
Sure, yeah, we have a few on staff. It isn't something I would say is arduous. It does take them a period of years, there's different tracks and they get different points for being in the business first. I think three years is typically what you kinda see for them to get to the full top level certification. They work through a variety of ways to get to that point. The fees, I can't tell you offhand what they are, but they're, you know, a hundred dollars a year type fees and they are more excessive. Did you want me to respond to any of the questions?
Any other questions for Tim?
Well, Steve Ray was waiting.
Oh, okay, go ahead. The only thing, I mean, I know that, I didn't wanna get into a big, long discussion about this 'cause I don't want to have this discussion on the floor and we'd be doing that on there. But I think the understanding of it is that, and I agree with Steve, is that if you're dealing with something that could potentially kill people, we're talking about a thousand-pound tree falling and destroying your home or falling on you, that's a lot different than anything. I mean, I get that, it's like an electrician, at least you get certified to be an electrician. It's not over regulation of government, it's about safety. Sometimes you have to do that, it's like a seatbelt, when you wear, when you have to wear your seatbelt to, you know, it's part of that. And I know, Sean, I disagree with certain parts of that, but I, but for me, it's about safety. It's about seeing the safety behind that. Because if I went out there by myself to go chop a tree down, it would not be good. But under the ordinance, you could, in your own house, or you're gonna, you could have your neighbor. That's on me, and if I, you know what I mean, that's on me. If I do that on my own private property, that's one thing. But if I'm going out to another place, giving myself, by saying, I'll chop a tree down, that ain't certification. Your neighbor, your neighbor could do that, could ask you to come cut his tree down under the ordinance. Would it be legal? Well, but that's, that's gone. But I'm saying, I mean, going out commercially trying to go against... Right, but my whole point is it's on, it's on them anyway. That they have to ask the questions to figure out if this person really is legit or not.
Well, I guess my argument would be, if they had called up the city and said, these guys who want to cut my tree down are being licensed, we would have said, we don't license them. But if they did have a license, we could verify that. So, I mean, the citizen has no way of determining whether someone has gone through that process or not
The way that it is now...
Without the ordinance.
Wide open, unregulated field, and I think we need to have some regulations here.
Ken?
I agree with them having to call and ask for license. I don't agree that a certified arborist has to be on site when they're cutting down a tree. I don't agree with the amount of insurance that they need to cover. That's up to the business, in my opinion, what they're gonna cover. I think if they could call and say, is this person licensed? Yeah, great, we know that, but as far as all the rest of the regulations, I disagree with it.
I had a question for Mr. Cortez. Let's say I'd been logging for the last five years in the Sahara Forest and I moved from the Sahara to Casper, Wyoming, and wanna start cutting down trees. Am I gonna have to go through that three-year process to get an arborist license to be able to fell trees?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, the way I understand it is not entirely. I mean, you would get some credit for that work experience that you garnered from your example. You would get to bring some of those points into the system, if you will, and then they'll look favorably upon that. And what that balances, like, does it get you fifty percent? I couldn't tell you right offhand.
Okay.
That's the way I understand it right now.
Any reactions to Ken's comment about the insurance or, well, whatever? The other, or the presence of an arborist at all times?
Um, about the insurance, yeah, you need to have some limit. Otherwise, I can come up and say, yep, I've got insurance, I've got like five thousand dollars worth of insurance. That, that won't repair my aerial truck if it breaks. So there needs to be some type of a limit that is reasonably set based on the dollars that you have the potential at risk. So, you know, I don't recall what it was in here, but we do need to be setting some type of a minimum standard, just like we do in automobile insurance. So from that standpoint, I think that's good. I have had issues all along about requiring arborists throughout entire jobs and things like that. You may even remember that from three years ago, when some of these discussions came up about having arborists. And particularly, you know, yeah, I would, well, I'm gonna bring up the amendment to exclude demolition contractors when they go out just to demolish something. You all can vote against it if you want, but I'm gonna bring that amendment up. Because there's no point in having an arborist out there when they're destroying three blocks of trees and buildings. That's just driving up somebody's cost, so...
Other call-ins on the insurance or the presence of arborists at all times? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, you convinced me that I think it is a good idea to have a certified person there all the time. You answered my concern there, so I'm kinda all in on that. The insurance, you know, I guess I could argue that, well, there's a little bit left to buy or beware. If you wanna hire a guy that's uninsured, maybe that's your fault. But, so I'm waffling on that one.
Just have to decide if we're, what kind of direction we wanna give to staff as far as drafting this ordinance or, it's obviously easier to do it here than make a bunch of amendments on the floor if we can. So, Kristen?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, typically speaking, if we were licensing them to some degree, what we're doing is saying, you know, the city has made sure that it is okay for this individual to come and do work on your property and that you have certain protections because he has been vetted through his licensure process with the city. So I guess to me, if you don't have license, insurance requirement, what you're ultimately saying is, yeah, they might know what they're doing, but what happens when the wind picks up thirty seconds before something happens and it falls and crashes in your house and they had fifteen thousand dollars of total umbrella coverage? I guess to me, like, I guess if you're licensing them, it just makes sense to me that basically what you're doing is putting a seal of approval. We're not guaranteeing anything, but I guess to me, if there's no insurance requirement, then what are we really telling people, is that, you know, they just fill out a form?
Almost better not license to all, if you give them that insurance.
Yes, that would be my... Correct.
Mike and then Steve.
Yeah, do we require general contractors, plumbers, electricians to show proof of insurance or proof at any level?
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, then let's have an insurance requirement in here, so that I am not...
Well, that was gonna be my same point, but I was gonna take it to a different point. And you could probably answer this, but taxis, like Taxi Cab, I believe we require insurance on those. I mean, there's a lot of different licenses that are given out that is part of the requirement.
How about, any further comments on the presence of the arborist at all times? We obviously got some complaints about that. You know, worst-case scenario is some guy's really under it and finds some eighteen-year-old kid who's never held a chainsaw in life. Said, here's what you do and I'll be back later to check on you. And something really bad happens 'cause that kid had no idea what he was doing.
And one other thing, too, is we are forgetting, because I mentioned the demolition contractors, they do have a license, they are insured. So it isn't like they're not insured, not licensed, they're a licensed demolition contractor. So that's...
Ken?
To go with yours, no disrespect to you in any way, but, you know, I don't, I don't see most companies just giving an eighteen-year-old a chainsaw and saying, hey, go whack the street in. There's always training in ninety-nine percent of companies. I mean, especially companies like that, you go to the oil rigs, they don't just say, hey, go turn a wrench. They're gonna train you on what you need to do and not do. So I don't see it being that way, in my opinion. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to answer Councilman Bates's concern there. Talking about companies, that's one thing, you have an organized business and everything, but what, you know, what I think we need to take a look at here is, okay, I go around and go door to door and say, hey, I'll trim your trees for so much money. That's, you know, we don't have any of that business structure there that tends to protect people. I'm not as concerned about eighteen-year-olds as I am concerned about methods and other kinds of incompetence getting out there and being unsupervised and doing things. But, and so, so that's kinda why I've come along into your way of thinking that I think you do need to have, and like, if you compare it to the contractor, the plumber, the electrician or anything, they gotta have a journeyman at, you know, an apprentice, there are structural programs there that are not when it comes to pre-trembling and that kind of thing. So I, I think it's a good idea to have a licensed guy there.
Just a couple more comments, then we're gonna have to take a thumbs up or thumbs down. Kristen?
The only thing I'd say is, from my experience on the contracting, licensing, and appeals board, the way that works is, it is one individual who holds that license typically for the company. But what that also means is that individual's license holds the responsibility for all of those acting underneath it. And so I guess my point would be, you could see it one or two ways. He might, you might wanna say he needs to be there, or what you just say is, any accidents that take place could result in the revocation of that license. And at that point, you can't practice. 'Cause I guess my point is that, that's how it works, like with electricians and with contractors. A master electrician's typically not on the site, but you're operating under his license and his license is the one that holds the responsibility. If something goes wrong, it's his license that is potentially being revoked or removed or... And so, I mean, you could to some degree do it in the same structuring.
Could you say something like detailed instructions will be provided by an arborist before any work is undertaken?
Something, yeah. I mean, I'm sure we could look at how it's worded with contractors, I don't know.
I don't know if that would have any, give us any relief from that.
Trees are just too unpredictable. You don't know if you start cutting into a branch if it's all around.
But as Sean brought up, this has been one accident in how many years? I mean, when has, has anybody else heard of this happening in Casper or even Wyoming within the last five years? A tree falling on a person and killing him?
Just 'cause we don't hear about it doesn't mean it didn't happen. I mean, I don't read the local newspaper.
Well, I think we're gonna have to do thumbs up or down on the presence of an arborist at all times. So, I think I'm gonna, so I guess, one, two, three, we have...
Four to three, you gotta make a decision.
Somebody's gonna... Yeah, you're gonna, it's all up to you, Kristen.
Well, I mean, we can still obviously propose amendments, so I'd still like to continue the discussion.
All right, so we'll leave it in for now, but maybe discuss the impacts of it. And insurance requirements, do we leave it as is or do people wanna suggest a change? Against all time? Insurance requirement, as written, thumbs up or down? Okay, so that stays in. All right, anything else on this?
Nope.
Move on to... Okay, anything else on the agenda? I guess I would like to note that we are going to talk about the contract with Flag. And there will be people making comments about the entire sequence of events that led to us being in this situation, including the original purchase of that property and which remains controversial in this community. And so I'm going to again ask people to take that public comment, ask questions if you're not sure what people are saying, but please do not use your position as a council member to debate with people about their opinions, to engage with them and get into an argument with them from the podium. You'll have an opportunity to speak your piece when we get to our discussion phase. Okay? And we will almost certainly receive some criticism for us being in this position. There's only a few of us who are responsible for voting for the purchase who are still on council. And I will certainly comment on that if I think it's appropriate. I will wait until the comment, the public comment period is closed. So, and I hope you will all do the same. Because this could be controversial and I, well, I expect it will be controversial.
Now, we paid three, is that right?
Pardon me?
We paid three, is that right?
We paid three million, it appraised at two point seven.
Okay, and along with that, what did we get when we, 'cause I wasn't here when all of the rest of it went down. How much have we gotten through the sale of the municipal garage, the Toyota building, K-Lark, those things?
Are we in a position to give those figures, Carter, or give you rough estimates?
I can, I can share that with you, sure. Uh, with respect to Mr. Mayor, uh, Council Cathy, the, uh, Milos, uh, building and the K-Larks building. If I could speak in sort of broad numbers, with the city received approximately five hundred thousand dollars, which was appraisal plus. Um, with regard to the municipal garage, uh, the actual exchange of cash that came to the city. Was, uh, in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars, but that was as a part of some land swaps as well.
Well, I was thinking we swapped some parking lots and stuff like that to give, to get to David Street Station and things.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
And, and, uh.
And power line.
Yes, correct. And so that, that, that was a, a relatively complex, uh, arrangement between the developer and the city, as well as the DDA, if you will. But, uh, but, but the actual relay of cash, in addition to some of the properties that were exchanged, was sixty-eight thousand, seventy thousand dollars. The, the livery building was not sold, uh, in, in previous attempts to do so. Um, and then with regard to the north parking lot, that is north of the K-Larks building or the, the hall on Ash. Um, that was, that was received as a part of the sale, but the city retained that lot for perpetuity in public parking purposes. The, the properties that are actually being sold as a part of this purchase agreement would include the livery building, which, which also includes some, uh. I'd say additional land, if you will, to the south of that building and, and kind of outside of Ashby's fence line. It includes the south parking lot, which is south of the Plains building. And, and east, if you will, of the alley between Ashby's property and the lot I'm talking about. It includes the three buildings in the Plains complex, which is the Nolan building and then the two sort of, I guess you'd say newer buildings.
The rest of the building, basically.
Yes, yes, sir, that's right. Those properties appraised for somewhere in the neighborhood of one point one, one point two million dollars. Um, the sale price on the table at this point in time, as is where is, is five hundred thousand dollars. For the properties that I've just described. And beyond that, I'm not aware of any other dollars that the city may have received. Particularly as it relates to the complexities that the three million dollar purchase might have acquired or included.
The three million dollar figure, that was for all of those properties?
Yes.
Yes, and that includes the north parking lot as well, outside of K-Larks. Yes.
So the two point seven appraisal that you referred to, that was for all of them?
Correct, which basically is south of David Street and I, I wanna say also south of the municipal garage as well. So that, that sort of rhombus, if you will, that encompasses the rest of that property.
Okay, can I answer everybody's questions?
I don't know if I can ask. 'Cause I'm gonna be abstaining from all of this, so I'm assuming I can't.
I think in a work session, he can ask a question, uh, if he's going to.
Can ask questions.
Do you know, John?
Well, you know, I, in, in talking about complex adventures, I think, you know, it's typically better if you're gonna abstain, to, to truly abstain and not be involved in it. Lawyers ask questions, it's part of their persuasion.
Tell Mike and have Mike ask the question.
Tell me and then I'll tell Ray.
We'll play, we'll play telephone a little bit.
Anything else on, uh, the agenda for next week that people are concerned about or have questions about?
Nope.
Okay, all right, so now we're going to the twenty-four to set that agenda. Uh, we currently have a number of things on the agenda that we've already put there.
Oh, that ones are, we set them four weeks in advance, right?
Oh, that's right, I make that, yeah. So now we're moving ahead, excuse me, to the eighth, which is an open agenda. So what on the list of items would people like to add to the agenda, Steve?
I would just make the suggestion that the RFP for the golf course and then also City Hall, as you have, the safe project is.
Everybody okay with that? Those are staff recommended and that, that, how much time do you think you'll leave for those, Carter?
Mr. Mayor, I would certainly say no less than twenty minutes apiece.
Okay.
That's okay.
Other items of interest to council to put on the agenda for the eighth of October. Ken?
Either the dog parks or the speed limit light running. Orble, okay.
Uh, I would actually agree with the speed limit one, 'cause I hate to say it, but I would like to probably leave this second street even though.
Have we received anything from our, our link or whatever we called it on our website where we put out a call for people, with people's concerns?
I, I'm not aware of any, Mr. Mayor, uh.
Surprised, but I think we'd have all kinds of people saying, well, this should change, that should change.
We, we, we will include that in this week's, uh, information packet if, if you've gotten anything to date. But I suspect at this point, surprisingly, uh, that would be no.
But just, basically, any citizen that has a concern about a speed limit should call the city manager's office.
Well, and that also included, I brought up, and I think you were going, Mayor, um. Yellow and red light runners and kind of statistics and such, 'cause I brought it up that that's been a huge issue. We've had one too many accidents regarding that and it's just been a very big concern to me that it's just, it's happening way too much. And we, we, I believe as a council, need to help, see what we can do to limit, help limit that as much as possible. I don't know how, I just, I mean, we need to bring it up, 'cause it is, it's been terrible, I think.
And we have had some emails, like the people at Green Meadows have emailed us with their concerns, could we make sure that they know? Anyone that has contacted us with a concern would be told, this is when we're gonna talk, we don't have, we'll be taking public comment on any concerns. Do you have a lot of speed limits in state?
I think we definitely need to talk about, uh, the running of the red lights. When I watched a school bus run a red light on southeast Wyoming Boulevard, I just, I just couldn't believe that.
Okay, so that could be a longer discussion on the eighth, depending on how many people want to provide comments. I mean, we talked about King Boulevard, whether that should be thirty or forty.
Thirteenth Street.
Okay.
That'd be fifty.
I think that, because I think that conversation is going to be potentially like an all nighter, so I think that, that absolutely has to be the only thing if we're adding something.
Other opinions?
Speed limits, is that what you're?
Yeah, I, I, I think we cannot add anything else.
Okay. Uh, then I guess we're full up on the eighth. If everyone agrees. Ken?
If I may ask the chief, I don't know if you knew that we wanted to know some statistics and info, will you be able to have that to us by the eighth?
Mayor, uh, council will not review everything in my power to get that to you, you're back at it soon at time of matter. You know, while you're talking about that, I mean, there are technologies in place that we have not utilized that where people are actually on a camera. Some municipalities, I don't know if we've ever considered those technologies. You're not a fan of those?
Wait, we're shocked, that's another.
Mr. Mayor, and chief, I, I'm wondering if, uh, within the context of talking about speed limits, things like, uh, red lights and all that kind of stuff. Do you think there'd be any benefit to, uh, maybe you or someone from your department talking to us a little bit about the efficacy of, uh. You know, different kinds of policing, different kinds of enforcement, the, uh, you know, if the, the, the little trailer things, you know, how effective those are? If there's any research on that kind of stuff as a part of that whole conversation? Or do, would that be putting too much on the table?
Chief, do you want to respond?
So, Mayor, council, um, we will, we absolutely would wanna provide any information that you request of us, so that would be a lengthy conversation. Traffic crashes in and of themselves tend to, tend to be caused by a wide variety of things. We have to, we focus and concentrate on the largest percentages of the cosmos, so, you know, red lights may not be. The functioning of the red lights might not be the problem, the cell phone that they're, they're checking, they're scrolling Instagram may be the problem. Um, and so anytime we're talking about reducing crashes, that is gonna be a function of engineering, a function of, uh, directed patrol time. Dedicated to, to changing driver behavior, it's gonna be a function of availability of officers to, uh, to conduct such operations. It's gonna be a function of public education, um, you know, there's a, there's a lot of things that go into it. So I, I would caution council from thinking that there's a silver bullet out there to reducing this, because if, if there was, we would find it and we would. We would get rich on the speaking circuit telling other communities about it. Um, so I, I would, I will provide as much education as I can to council. If we can, you know, it's particularly helpful to me if you were to identify the roadways in advance of that time period, so I can run the data analysis on it. The efficacy of the trailers, which if you have noticed, we've got some of those new trailers are out and about right now. Uh, those are force multipliers for us. Those, those perform a certain function for, for a certain amount of time, till people get used to them and, and realize that's not really a police officer. But those trailers, they help and they are much more efficient than, than having to hire an officer who must be dedicated to that same section of the roadway. So we're doing everything we can, but there is a little bit of art and science to this. And so Andrew, who's not here tonight, and I, we would love to answer these questions for you, you know, but it's particularly helpful. If you let me know in advance what, what sections of the roadway, what intersections, so forth and so on. That way I can, I can get specific data and Andrew can look at specific data. It takes us some time to acquire it if we don't have it al- already, if we have not already done that. So we, we wanna provide information, um, to you and we, we will go to any efforts that, that council wants.
And ju- just one other little quick point about the trailers. On twelfth, or on Beverly, it's really nice, you got one on the south end of that school zone and one on the, the north end. Right there by where it says school twenty mile an hour, the trailer says speed limit thirty miles an hour. You might wanna drive by and look at that.
We've looked at it, we actually moved it, remember that when it's flashing, that one takes precedence.
Well, I know, but it, to me today, when I drove by there, it, you know, it kinda looked a little bit confusing, like, well, is it thirty or is it twenty?
Well, remember our motive is we've had some street racing and things on Beverly Street.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
We're trying to cut down on that, but when those are flashing, those take precedence. That, that roadway is thirty miles an hour at all times, other than the school zone, so having those may be confusion, but it's actually better to have people going, hmm, is it thirty or twenty? Because they're actually paying attention to what is, what is applicable to me right now.
Steve?
You were asking about wanting, uh, areas or whatever. I know there's a couple of us here that would be interested in what has happened in and around the hospital and on Second Street since the lowering of the speed limit. Ah, there's a third one.
But that could wait till the eighth.
Yes, absolutely, yes, this is, this is, yeah.
The other thing I would like, uh, maybe to weave into this is, um, you know, going back to the Green Meadows thing, let's put a speed bump in. Well, there are a variety of traffic calming methods with pros and cons, and I wonder if we could just have a brief overview of different methods used to calm traffic? And how effective they are and what the consequences are when you lose them.
Corvettes do not do well with speed bumps.
And make that, an opportunity to kind of educate the public about different ways of that.
With ground clearance.
So, anything else for chief?
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Anything else on the agenda for the eighth of October? I think we're all set, so our next thing is legislative review. Um, I attended the, uh, Mike and I attended the Region Four meeting and, um, uh, it, it was, it was a good meeting we had up at Fogadon and, um. David from WAM was there, uh, along with Justin, and, uh, I would like to have, uh, uh, David come to us and, and talk in our, uh, work session. He, he's the individual who introduced himself at the podium at one of our formal meetings about two months ago, um, as the new WAM executive director. But, um, let's, um. Uh, so with, that's, that's something we can put on our agenda too, but I'd kind of like to weave that into when he's traveling through this, this part of the world. So, um, we had, uh, representatives, representatives from Shoshone and Pavilion and, and Lander. And, um, basically did a, a round discussion of things going on in their respective communities. And, um, and then talked a little bit about the gas play that's going on that, uh, in the, um, in, in the Monida area, the Monida gas play and the impacts. And some of the meetings that have taken place, so it was useful. I, I, I just wanna, uh, I guess express to all of you, I guess I wanna remind everyone that the municipalities. Exist because they are, were created in state statute. That our very existence depends upon actions of the state legislature. And that Casper is one of the two large communities in the state. And as such, we provide, we serve as, as leaders statewide, as far as what's going on in the state and, and, and the direction that the state will take. We need to be active participants in those conversations at the state level. And we need to be involved as the, um, different proposals are brought to the legislature, are discussed in interim committees and eventually, uh, become bills that are voted on. Casper's level of involvement historically in those processes has been low. We have not been active players at the state level. And I implore you to become more involved in act, actions and, and proposals at the state level. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that everyone here has to go to a WAM conference. Um, but WAM is the vehicle that we use to convey our concerns and to weigh in on proposals at the state level. And it is our, essentially our lobbyist. And so when. WAM, and WAM's strength is directly proportional to its members' involvement. And, uh, and, and, and the presence of its members in its activities. And so, um, I don't know when Casper will host another Region Four meeting. Um, I'm just frankly saying to you all, I was disappointed that Mike and I were the only ones there. And, um, I just think down the road, if we're going to be effective, we've got to be active at, at the state level and be involved in those discussions. So, um, and, and I just, I feel as the WAM representative that I have done a less than stellar job at inspiring people to increase their involvement with state level activities. Because our lives depend heavily upon actions of the legislature or, or things that the legislature chooses not to act on that are important to us. or, or things that the legislature chooses not to act on that are important to us. And so I hope I said that in a way that is palatable to all of you, but we have got to be more active in these, at the state level. Mike?
I, I'd like to follow up on what Charlie was talking about there. One of the things that, that I can tell you from, you know, all of my years working in state government, the, the thing that the legislature loves to do is to divide and conquer. And if they can take and divide, well, if they can say, well, okay, you big cities want this, but you small towns, you know, divide and conquer, they love to do that. WHAM is the one vehicle that we have to not let them divide us, to sit down with them and, you know, as an example, this business about, you know, local option, sales taxes, you know, where a lot of these small communities were running around saying taxation without representation and all that kind of stuff and everything. You know, if we can sit down at the table with people from Shoshone, Lander, you know, all of the small communities around the state and explain to them what's going on and what the needs are and everything, and, you know, that's our chance to sell them on the idea that it's not, we're not out to give them. You know, that it's not us versus them or them versus us. We're all in the same boat together and there are things that we can all work on together. But if we don't have enough people sitting there around the table, the entire city council of Shoshone was there at this meeting. Oh, you know, that, you know, those guys know that they, their life depends on, on dealing with WHAM and dealing with that stuff. You know, our lives equally depend on, you know, having that, the strength of that association and being able to sit down around the table with all of those guys and, you know, and, and explain to them and convince them in that, in that environment why it is and what it is that our needs and our problems are so that when we go to the legislature with a proposal, it's not, oh, that's one another one of those big cities wanting to, you know, to step on us little towns and if we can't have it, they can't have it and all that type of stuff. So, you know, when, when Charlie talks about how important this stuff is, it really is. It's, it's way beyond the importance that I think most people realize that it is. But specifically in those kind of regards, it's, it's just where we're going to live and die.
Fair enough.
How far out do they schedule like the region meetings and things? Because what happened for me is we said it was at four every single time we discussed it and then right before it was at five thirty. And so I had.
That was unfortunate.
I had already planned things for my kiddos and stuff and I can't, I can't just move it last minute.
And I did not talk with David Fraser about that or how that all played out. It would really, they had a, they decided to put a presentation in on marijuana and cannabis and, and how that was, and the legalization issues. And they did that at four o'clock to five thirty. And I don't really know, I wasn't involved in that conversation, but you're right, that did happen at the last minute and that was unfortunate.
He just heard with kiddos until like more than a second.
And I really, I didn't, don't mean to shame people for not showing up. And it's more about, from this point forward, I, I would encourage you to think about involvement with state, in state level politics as as much a part of your job as the things we did tonight. Because it is. And we are, our lives are in many ways determined by actions that occur at the state level.
I think if we could get, sorry, just to follow up on that really quick, if we could get like a schedule of like upcoming things ahead of time? I mean, I'm sure I'm not the only one here that the earlier I can plan something, the easier it is for me to avoid conflicts going forward.
And we will be, WHAM is actively pursuing now the, the resolution writing process and resolutions that are passed by WHAM are influential in the state level debates that our legislature has. So Ray, you were waiting?
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only thing that I would say is being, it's not only just being a part of WHAM, it's also talking to our state representatives, doing the dinners that we've had and participating in that. And so I think it's important that we talk to our state legislators on a very regular basis, pushing that agenda that we have and that we've talked about, WHAM initiatives and things like that. So it's critical that we are talking to our state legislators and spending that, that opportunity when you see them, calling them, writing them, to be able to push it as well.
And without belaboring, as Mike brought up, the local option of tax. Well, that, that's going to pass or fail in our state legislature. And, and to a great extent, the actions of council members like ourselves will determine whether that happens because they are interested in what we think. Well, that's a big deal. If, if it passes, we, we could have the option of putting a police station on the ballot for our Casper residents. Ask them if they want to tax themselves and build a station, police station. That requires a change in legislation to allow us to do that. We can't currently do that. Well, it's a pretty big deal whether that option is given to us or not. And again, it's a, it's the strength of the communications and the strength of the support that really drives the process. These things are very fluid. So, and that, that, that just, it was a good meeting, they're great people, I hope you get a chance to meet.
Mr. Mayor, and I'm sorry that Carter left the room. One of the things that I don't know, the respect that Charlie and Carter command from all of these guys statewide is really an impressive thing. And, and I just want to recognize both of them, you know, for the hard work that they have done to establish that kind of reputation. It's really neat when you sit there and see how much these guys from everywhere else respect them.
Thank you. Well, I'm supposed to pass this around for any of the, any of you that would like to attend that WICO function or WACO function, if you prefer that pronunciation of the acronym. And let's see, with that, is there anything else? Well, let's go around. Does anyone have anything to report? Or anything from you, Ken, for the week?
Just really quick, we had the Engage Summit last weekend, which is actually a really big deal that we had it here. We also had it at the Hall at, on Ash, and I think we were their first event. So there's a new meeting space in town if anybody has something they need a meeting space for. The one interesting thing that was said at Engage, not only the governor, but also another state representative, the average age in the state legislature is fifty-five. And so the state legislature seemed to think that that was a healthy average. And so I would just put that out for consideration for everyone. It was people.
But how many, how many, how many attended the Engage?
Oh, over a hundred.
Wow.
It, it was, it's a, it was a big deal to have it here and to have such a good turnout.
Anything that you heard from them that we should take into account in our strategic planning?
I'll bring some more stuff to you. There was actually, we did an Eternia County breakout and obviously relatively influential people in the age of eighteen to thirty-five. They had some takeaways on projects that they would like to somehow organize and be involved with the county and the city.
Okay, Steve, anything? Ray?
No, nothing to my.
Steve?
I went to a CNFR meeting yesterday. This year was our second highest year for amount of dollars coming in. Attendance was not, attendance was, we had eighteen thousand fifty-four people that attended. The highest year we had was twenty-one thousand eight seventy-eight back in two thousand fourteen. So the rodeo next year is June fourteenth through the twentieth. And they're looking, maybe, I don't know if you had anything to do with the Tim, but the flags that Chris Walsh just had made downtown. Is there a way I can get a price and who did those? Because we're needing to replace all the CNFR banners next year. So we need to find out who the vendor was and the cost on it. And then I know we have more lights and whatnot going in down Midwest now. Is there a way of finding out or projecting how many of those? Would be able to put those flags on June of next year so we can order enough flags and get those? Okay, all right.
All right, nothing else? Then we need to, we have an executive session planned, a special meeting planned. So let me get my agenda here so I do this properly.
Four session. I don't know.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
My, my mom's a county.
Okay.
Works for the county and does this, so skip out on that, probably not be involved.
I now, I now call the September tenth, twenty nineteen special council meeting to order. The chair would entertain a motion to, by amendment, actually excuse the absence of Councilman Vice Mayor Johnson and, and Councilman Hoppe.
So move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Who was the second on that, Mayor?
Oh, sorry. You get the motion.
I have Huber as the second.
Who seconded?
It was Steve.
Steve?
Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding litigation. Therefore, the chair would entertain, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session and at the conclusion of that executive session to reconvene the special meeting solely for the purpose of adjournment of this special meeting. Someone move that, please?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Huber. There being majority of members present and a motion to adjourn into executive session having been moved and seconded and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of council present, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion.